Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2024 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two discussion topics, the first being WorkSource Montgomery to hear from them, and then to hear about the city's plan to convert from gas to electric vehicles. Before we get to that, we need to have a motion to conduct an executive session. I'll turn it over to Jamil.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I moved that the Mayor and City Council of the city of Gaithersburg conduct a closed executive session immediately following its session tonight, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 pursuant to the general provisions, Article of the Antenated Code of Maryland, Section 305b1i, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic to be discussed is a personnel matter to conduct the city attorney's biannual performance review.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, carries five zero. All right, thank you all very much. We are going to proceed to our first discussion topic and hear from our friends at WorkSource Montgomery. With us today, we have Anthony Featherstone, who's the Executive Director, and joined by Sarah and Melissa. Take it away. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening to the council. And first, I will say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and talk about the services that we offer at WorkSource Montgomery through our local workforce development board for the residents of this county and the city of Gaithersburg. I'm going to take a moment and hand it off to my colleagues to so they can introduce, so they can introduce themselves before we jump into it. So, Sarah?
Good evening, thank you so much for having us. I'm Sarah Vanderwart, I'm the Director of Government and Board Relations at WorkSource Montgomery.
I'm Melissa Cunningham, I'm the Director of Programs at WorkSource Montgomery.
And as mentioned, Anthony Featherstone, Executive Director for WorkSource Montgomery and our Local Workforce Development Board. Before I jump into it, you'll hear me say WorkSource Montgomery and Workforce Development Board several times, but I want to note that we use those terms interchangeably. Our Workforce Development Board is a 34-member body appointed by the County Executive and County Council that really shapes the strategic vision for Montgomery County's local workforce development system, what it should do, who it should serve, the impacts it needs to have on our county from an economic standpoint. And WorkSource Montgomery is the fiscal and staff agent for our county's Workforce Development Board. So if I use the two, the two terms, I use them interchangeably as we are one altogether. And so, we're happy to talk to you for a few about the work that we do at WorkSource Montgomery, and then hopefully we'll have plenty of time to talk with you and answer any questions that you may have about our organizational workforce development as a whole. And so, from the top, our role is really simple as we see it. Our job is to connect people to jobs and to connect jobs or local businesses to people. And so, those are our two primary customers, and that work entails a lot of, that work entails a lot on both sides of the house. On the job seeker side of the house, there's a lot of career coaching, there's a lot of case management, there's a lot of barrier remediation, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of financial assistance when it comes to training, support services when it comes to transportation, or any education or employment-related expense. But on the flip side, with our local business community, we need to make sure that everything that we're training residents for, that there's a job at the end of the tunnel, and not just a job, but a career pathway, opportunity. And so, it's our charge to make sure that we understand what the needs are of our business community today and tomorrow, so that we can make that connection in an appropriate manner between our job seekers and our business community. A little bit about our funding, just so you know how the money flows. From left to right, I'll start with our federal funding. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, more commonly referred to as WEOWA, is the governing piece of legislation that kind of charges us with the work that we do and how we should operate our public workforce system. And so, that funding starts at Congress, or starts with Congress and flows to the US Department of Labor and down to the Maryland Department of Labor, and then on to our local Workforce Development Board and to WorkSource Montgomery. And so, that piece of legislation, WEOWA, as I mentioned, defines what the public workforce system should look like and how we should operate in partnership with other workforce systems like Health and Human Services, Division of Rehabilitation Services, and the other ecosystem partners in workforce development that do the same work or adjacent work as us. And so, that's our primary funding structure through the federal government. We also have state funding that we receive. We have new funding through the Department of Juvenile Services to provide mentorship and work experience to justice-involved youth. We also receive state funding to support our summer employment program, Summer Rise, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, that provides awesome summer career experiences to our MCPS 11th and 12th graders. We receive county funding as well through Montgomery County Government, also through the Department of Health and Human Services, and through the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. And I'll underscore Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation because we do have one of the only American job centers located within our correctional facility, the Montgomery County Correctional Facility, doing awesome work to help our residents who are currently incarcerated prepare for life after incarceration, specifically attachment to the labor market as soon as they, as soon as they're released. And then, as a nonprofit moved outside of county government in 2015, we're able to operate as a nonprofit. And so, we also receive a bit of private funding from the J. Willard and Alice S. Marriott Foundation. And so, we wanted to start there, just so you understand who fuels and who funds the work that we do with our residents and our businesses. Where we are, if you would have looked at this slide maybe about two and a half years ago, we would have had three locations, but circumstances brought about, you know, with the pandemic, and then also looking at our large county of almost 500 square miles, we had to make some adjustments so that we could reach residents where they are. And so, we're proud to say that we have nine total centers that offer employment and training services. One is the center within the Montgomery County Correctional Facility. We have a virtual job center that has the ability to serve every Montgomery County resident, no matter where you are on the employment spectrum. And we have a comprehensive center in Wheaton, and I mention comprehensive because that's a center that has about 12 partners located under one roof. It's a one-stop shop, and so whether you are coming to get a public assistance benefit, Health and Human Services is within that building. Whether you're coming to receive assistance with your unemployment insurance, Maryland Department of Labor is in that building. And so, we have a true one-stop-shop feel when it comes to our comprehensive center in Wheaton. And something that we're really proud of, we're really proud of is the Mobile Job Center that we'll talk about in a few slides. But these are our nine centers, we like to say that we're not hard to find, and we'll come to you if you can't come to us, and we'll talk a little more about that mobile service strategy in a few moments. We have two boards. The county's Workforce Development Board, which is massive, it's a 34-member body, and we also have a nonprofit Board of Directors. And so, with two boards and almost 50 great individuals that are working towards improving our workforce development, our workforce and talent pipelines within the county, we needed to make sure that there was a level of coherence and coordination and collaboration between the two boards. And so, we came up with a common language, and I know many of our board members, Jamil included, probably get tired of me talking about our common language, but our common language are these six priorities that you see in front of us, and they are in order intentionally because we don't think that we can do one well without doing the preceding priority really well. And so, system building, what are we doing to bring Montgomery County's workforce ecosystem together? Community engagement, how are we getting information out to the community but bringing information back from the community on the efficacy and efficiency of our services? What are the needs of our businesses? What are their talent needs? What are the industry trends today and tomorrow and so forth? What are we doing about it as far as creating talent pipelines with our residents so that they can get into these high-wage, high-growth jobs? Career education, prepping for tomorrow's workforce, which are our young folks, providing career coaching to 6th through 12th graders within Montgomery County Public Schools. And last but not least, I mentioned WEOWA, which is the federal legislation that provides our core funding. We can't be good stewards of our federal funding in Montgomery County unless we do all of those preceding priorities well, then we can truly be innovative and impactful with our federal funding. And so, this is our common, our common language, these are our love languages when it comes to workforce development and our WorkSource Board and everything that we do, every department within our organization is structured so that we can be successful in each one of these six priorities that you see in front of you. Alice, I'm not sure if you are familiar with this term, but obviously with being stewards of federal, state, and local funding, there are boxes that we need to check to determine if we're successful, and we check those boxes well, but we want to make sure that we're not a checkbox workforce development organization. And so, we do a lot of, I would say, extra, non-traditional things to improve the impact of our services, you know, one being that we do house a financial empowerment center within our Wheaton American Job Center that provides financial literacy services that are all geared towards homeownership because it's expensive to purchase a home in Montgomery County. And so, that's what we want our participants to be able to do, is to build generational wealth through homeownership. But we really gauge how effective we are as an organization through looking at the ALICE needle. And so, ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed, and so in a nutshell, it's the working poor, is what some folks call it. And so, you are a family in Montgomery County that is just making it, and you are hoping that the tire doesn't blow, that your child doesn't have a growth spurt, and you need to buy shoes off tour, off schedule, or any unexpected expense occurs because it'll send your family into a household deficit. And so, the need is great in Montgomery County, I'm sure that's no surprise to you all, but if you look at the data, we were at 32% in the previous ALICE report, and the ALICE population has increased to 37% in the most recent report. And so, if you're talking about 388,000 households countywide, those are a lot of families that are around the kitchen table proverbially, trying to figure out their household budget and to stay out of a deficit. You also see the numbers for the city of Gaithersburg, which has a 42% ALICE population. And so, those are your residents that are below the poverty line or right around the poverty line. And our feeling is that if you're right around the poverty line or right above it, you're probably feeling the same sentiments as the families that are below the poverty line. And so, this is how we gauge impact, this is how we gauge success as a workforce organization, are these numbers going down? And so, we've embedded these numbers that are published by the United Way of the National Capital Area into our Performance and Compliance Department, bless you, so we know we're truly moving the needle for our residents in the county as well as the city of Gaithersburg. Jumping into our first priority, system building, which, you know, sometimes gets tossed around a lot, but we're very intentional about the work that we do when it comes to system building. Number one, we just think you have to have good relationships. People have to know you are who you say you are, and you do what you say you're going to do. And so, we do a lot of work in just building, building relationships and showing up and being a present, present partner, and trying to expand or help our partners execute their mission. But there's so many partners in Montgomery County, we had to take a step back and we had to asset map the county. And so, we did a community asset map that revealed over 150 nonprofit organizations that offer workforce or workforce-adjacent services within the county. It turned into a 150-plus-page document, and I always say I've never read it, will never read it, because we created an electronic tool where we transferred the information on the community asset map into an e-locator that's located on our website. And so, if you are a resident of the city of Gaithersburg, if you are a business in the city of Gaithersburg, if you're a community partner in the city of Gaithersburg, you can see who does what, with whom they do it for, what's their capacity, where they're located, because proximity matters. And so, you can either find a service, find a provider to partner with, or you can find a provider who may be able to provide you with trained and reliable candidates for your, for your business. And so, we're really proud of that. We've asset mapped the county and it's an ever-evolving map because new programs and new organizations are popping up on our radar that we didn't know about yesterday that we know about today. Once we did the asset map, we realized that there were some glaring gaps, there's not a lot for young adults on the autism spectrum, there's not a lot for folks who are returning home from incarceration. And so, we used private funding and we used recovery funding to fill some gaps. You may have noticed that we have an empowerment center. We're the only county in the state of Maryland that has a 100%, that has an American Job Center that's 100% focused on serving those who have been justice-involved or formerly incarcerated. And so, we're really proud of that because you can't take someone that's been incarcerated and put them in a general population-like program and expect it to be successful because there are specific needs for individuals who've been incarcerated. And so, we took the asset map and we filled gaps, and some gaps we filled directly, and some gaps we knew we weren't the most credible messenger or provider to fill those gaps. And so, we created a network called the Community Workforce Network, which is a network of 30-plus providers that provide niche programs. Sunflower Bakery works with young folks who have differing abilities, and they do culinary training, and they place these young folks at our grocery stores. And so, I always say, you don't know how important your bakery is at your grocery store until you need to buy cupcakes for your, for your eight-year-old's birthday. And so, that's a program that we couldn't fill, we're not the credible provider, but we can help expand a program that is in existence in Montgomery County for that population. And then, with so many different partners within the county, we have connective technology that pulls us together. And so, we have a Community Workforce Network portal that allows Organization 1 to communicate with Organization 150 to provide referrals, to share information, so that the customer, the mutual customer, Montgomery County resident that's working with both of those organizations, doesn't have to tell their story 10 times to get to a service that they need. We can have a cohesive and coherent workforce system that's talking behind the scenes as we're working with our mutual customer. And so, that's a lot about, that's a lot about what we're doing when it comes to system building, and it's all geared towards decreasing duplication, decreasing fatigue, budgets are not getting bigger, so we want to decrease waste because we do waste a lot of money in workforce development, not WorkSource Montgomery in particular, but workforce development in general because we don't leverage resources. We can pay for A and B, and you can pay for B and C, let's work together and save money on both ends, but the customer gets the service that they need. Second, community engagement. We prioritize that as our second priority because we want to make sure that the programs that we develop and develop in boardrooms really meet the needs of our community. And so, we don't recruit, number one, we stay away from that word because that's a quantitative approach, and for us, it's a take, take, take approach, and it's kind of selfish. And so, we educate the community on what we do and how to get to our services. And so, with that approach, we've seen an influx of referrals from community partners and folks who need our services, being able to access the services that they need to get to for economic mobility. We have a Community Impact Advisory Committee that we vet all of our new programs with. It's comprised of faith-based, community-based leaders, government leaders, participants who talk through our services, whether it's good or bad, or whether they feel indifferently about it. We want to make sure that the programs that we're developing actually make sense for the communities that we're trying to serve, and we're not always as close to the pulse of the community as some of our faith leaders and so forth. And so, that's been big for us. But I think our most important tool when it comes to community engagement is our Mobile Job Center. We looked at our data three years ago, and we realized that we weren't serving who we were intended to serve, and that's our residents with the highest level of barriers to success. And that's because we were sitting back in our job centers waiting for folks to come to us, and that just doesn't work. And so, what our board did was, was we came up with a mobile service strategy, where we purchased a Mobile Job Center. And I don't know if you, you've seen the Mobile Job Center in, you know, in the community, but it is an office on wheels with an 88 lift with six workstations with an awning for cover with an outside PA system. And so, we're able to go directly into communities and promote awareness, which is good, but access is great. And so, with that Mobile Job Center, we're able to bring more people into our service delivery network. And proud to say, last year, we served, I believe, about 14,000 Montgomery County residents. And so, that's just a little bit about our, about our community engagement strategy. Nothing I've talked about so far talks about jobs or businesses and so forth, it talks about building community, building systems, so that we can build programs that are of benefit to our county. Next up, business engagement. We do a lot of work with our local business community, and we kind of segment our services in two different ways. Number one, our core services, and so, businesses can come and use our space for any type of meeting or anything they may want to use our space for. We provide consultative services, we provide access to a free job board where they can post jobs and search for candidates. We provide free access to a learning management system where they can upscale their incumbent workforce. But one of the, I guess, the biggest components of our core business service are job fairs and recruitment events, connecting businesses to potential, potential candidates. And we have much success with our job fairs, our most recent one, at United Therapeutics, or about 500-plus job seekers connect with over 30, 30 businesses, and people were walking out saying, you know, I found a driver, or I found a job, or whatever the case may be. And so, we're extremely happy when we're able to make that connection in that manner. But there are also specialized services, we like to say that we have a grant for every checkpoint in the employee lifecycle, whether you are trying to hire a new employee and you, you need assistance with subsidizing that cost, whether you have a new employee onboarded, and you need assistance with getting them up to speed and acclimating them to your systems and your business, or they've been with you for a certain amount of time and you want to upscale them so they can be more competitive, which in turn makes your business more competitive as well. There's a business grant for every one of those phases in an employee lifecycle. And so, this is a big piece of the work that we do, is making sure that we understand what the needs are from our business community here, here in the county. And so, from there, now we can really get to work with our residents in developing talent pipelines. And so, that happens in a lot of different ways, and we segment them into our sector connector programs. You'll see that our high-growth industries are listed on our sector connector programs, that's healthcare, information technology, life science, hospitality, construction, transportation, and a lot of professional services as well. And so, we, we segment all of our talent pipeline programs into those sector connector programs. We provide career services to residents where they can come and just get help with the job search, they can jump into professional development workshops, they can access a virtual career and training center where you can do everything from learning how to learn the basics of Excel, to learn Adobe and Design, to getting your Security Plus certification, training so that you can sit for the Security Plus certification through CompTIA. And so, there's a level of core services coming to job fairs that any resident can walk into our office, brick and mortar or virtual, and receive assistance with. But a lot of our residents that we serve need additional services, which we categorize as training services, and that's where you get provided, or you get matched with a career coach or a career advisor who will help you out with barrier remediation, career planning. We do a lot of work in paying for residents to go to school to get a vocational certification through Montgomery College or one of our local providers, and then providing support services along the way. We want you to be able to focus on training and not focus on what it costs to get to training, or focus on the childcare, or if your car even breaks down, it's possible that we can help you get your car fixed because all of these things affect your level of success, success when it comes to your educational employment activities. And then, helping you find a job. We don't do anything where it doesn't lead to employment, no training prayers, we say in our industry, we want to make sure that when you're training and you're finished, there's an employment pathway for you, and it will provide case management for 12 months after you gain that employment, because we know life happens and barriers come up, and we want to make sure that we can help you work through those barriers once you're employed for, for a period of 12 months. And so, those are our talent pipeline initiatives, it's a lot of work in developing cohorts for the bio, you know, bootcamps for life science pipelines, a lot of healthcare initiatives for clinical medical assistance, EMTs, CNAs, GNAs, entry-level positions like that, helping folks enter into the information technology field through A-plus, Security Plus, Network Plus certifications and so forth. And so, that's where we take that information from our businesses and we develop training or pipeline initiatives so that residents can access those, those employment opportunities. Career education, our fifth priority. We were tasked with providing career counseling to all 6th through 12th graders in MCPS, that's 87,000 young folks. That's more students than some school districts have enrolled in total in the state of Maryland. And so, individualized doesn't exist when it comes to 87,000 students. And so, we wanted to find a model, a program that was equitable, that allowed minimal slips through the cracks. And so, we found a model in California called the World of Work, and we adopted and adapted it in Montgomery County. And so, you see the components of the program in front of you, but in short, we are working with 6th through 12th graders to help them identify their strengths, interests, and work values, and then connect to a set of career themes. Are you realistic? Are you investigative? Are you artistic, social, enterprising, conventional? And from there, we, we connect you to industries, we connect you to actual categories or positions and real people from an industry engagement standpoint to make those theoretical jobs and industries a real thing. We have about 50-plus, 51 career coaches deployed in all of our middle and high schools and specialty programs, but it can't just happen at that, at that point in time. And so, what we're doing is we're creating more career-curious schools, I practiced that one, so I wouldn't get mixed up, tongue-tied on that one. But what does that mean? It means that we have over 500 career champions after one year. Teachers who have embedded career management language into their core instruction. And so, it's happening with the career coaches, it's happening in the classrooms with the teachers. When you walk into the schools, what you're seeing is RIASC information, is career information. And so, it's a more career-curious atmosphere with connections to industry partners. And so, when our young learners, our students leave MCPS, you get a more engaged student if you're going to college, you get a more engaged worker because the work that they're doing really aligns with who they are from a strength, interest, and work value standpoint, and their themes affirm it. And now, if, you know, you're like me, your plans change a lot once you turn 18 and you leave high school. And so, another agenda with this program is to give young folks agency over their career decisions. And so, it's not dependent upon you working with Mr. Featherstone through this language, you're just as fluent in this language and how to navigate yourself, your career themes in the labor market, once you've finished MCPS and things change or your interests change and so forth. And so, we're really excited about this, and one year, as I mentioned, over 500 teachers have embedded this into their core curriculum. Community partners are adopting the career language, and we've worked with about 45,000 students. And the feedback we're getting from, from students is that they have a clearer vision of who they are from a strength, interest, and work value standpoint and the opportunities that are out there. And so, this is something that 6th graders will get all the way through 12th, 12th grade, and we want to create a parade of career advisors for themselves and for their communities and for their families as they finish MCPS. And so, really excited about this, it's something new, but we think we're going to change the world with our MOCO CAP program, Montgomery County Career Advising Program. And so, you can visit moco cap.com if you want to learn more about it. And then, last but not least, we talked about WEOWA, our workforce system. We gauge impact and success in ways outside of what the federal government requires us to track and monitor and manage, but we know we need to be successful when it comes to our federal performance. And so, once we've built systems so we can work together, once we understand the needs of the community, once we understand what our business needs are, we've developed solid programs to develop talent pipelines. We've also edified those pipelines through working with our 6th through 12th graders. Now, we can make magic happen when it comes to our federal WEOWA performance. And so, we have shined over the last two to three years when it comes to our federal performance here in Montgomery County, and what we do in Montgomery County tips the scales in the state, and I think that's, that's universal, no matter what topic that you're, you're talking about. And so, what you see in front of you is some of our data from FY24, and you also see a distribution of the 14,000 customers that we, that we served and, you know, where they live at from a geographic standpoint. know, where, where they live at from a geographic standpoint. And so this is what we do, who we are in a, in a nutshell. Looking, looking ahead, there's something, you know, some important things on the horizon. Wanted to make sure that we let you know that, you know, WorkSource Montgomery and our Workforce Development Board is also tasked with developing our four-year workforce development plan for Montgomery County. And so it outlines where we are, where we want to be and how we'll get there over the next four years. And it's really intentional when it comes to talking about how we're going to help residents who are disabled, who are disconnected, young adults, who are, you know, older workers or who may be dealing with any level of barrier, public assistance recipients, how are we going to help residents with barriers to economic mobility, get to a point where, where they can buy a home in Montgomery County. And so we're, we're excited about that. It's a plan that we develop every four years and we update every two years at the midpoint. So we're always developing a plan. But we're excited about this because it's another opportunity to put some good things on paper that are practical, that holds us accountable as an organization and as a workforce board and, and system. I think last but not least, we always make a shameless plug. The best way to find out what we're doing is to follow us on social media. And now I won't get in trouble with my director of communications because I want to. But that's it. And we're, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Really comprehensive. I had questions written down, but you answered them during the, during the presentation. So let me add a deference to Jamil, who's, who's on the board. Let me, let him go first here.
Sure. Just have a few questions. Thank you for coming tonight. As Jeff said, I've been proud to, since now for three years, I think I've been on the board. And it's funny because when I first moved to Montgomery County in 95, I got my first job through WorkSource Montgomery or the workforce, the, the Job Center in Wheaton. So it's interesting to see it turn around to where we are now. Can we go to packet page seven? Said a few questions. Are there any, in, in your tenure at WorkSource or if you know before, has, has WorkSource ever worked with a municipality in terms of WorkSource development programs?
So, so we have never worked with a municipality when it comes to our workforce programs, which is one of the reasons I'm really excited to, to be here and talk to you all tonight. And hopefully it's a, a start to continuous updates and, and conversations. But we, we, we have not. We do know that there are other workforce areas that, that have or do, most, I think notably our, our neighbor to the east, Prince George's County. But we, we, we haven't at WorkSource.
And not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot a little bit, how, how could you see if there was to be, how does PG work, Prince George's, work with some of their municipalities? What are the differences? What can WorkSource bring a municipality?
So I think as you start at the federal level and just work your way down, there is a, a more customized or tailored approach, approach to, to local needs. Obviously Congress develops the WEOWA legislation for the, the country, not for Montgomery County. And so as you work your way down, county funding is, is really flexible. It lets us, or allows us to meet a, a specific need here in Montgomery County. I think as we work our way to the municipalities, I think the level of flexibility is even, even greater. And so there's opportunity to expand access for your residents to kind of turnkey initiatives that we have going on for various populations or to pull some great ideas off the shelf and pilot them and see if that concept can be proven.
Thanks.
Questions, comments? Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I've, I've known of workforce for, for some time, but never to, to this extent. So thank you for this comprehensive presentation. One of the things that's really interested me is the 12-month post-job achievement. So can you, can you expound on that? How does, how does that work, the interaction there? And, and the success rate of it?
Sure. So it is, it is a standard offering for individuals that are, that get to that point where we, you know, pay for you to go to school and place you in employment and so forth. And in the actual case man, the time looks the same for everyone, but the case management looks different for, for each individual customer. And so it really depends on your set of circumstances, your, your set of barriers, your set of needs that arise. And so it may be really low, low touch point, low intensive for certain customers and for other customers. We may have our retention career advisors that are talking to you almost every, every week, providing referrals to community resources, utilizing funds that are available to, to help you out financially if, if things arise. And so it really depends on a set of circumstances. It also entails us engaging with the business if we help you obtain employment with one of our close business partners. Sometimes we may be able to extend the runway based on the partnership and based on the barrier remediation things that are, are going on. But it really just gives our, our customers someone who, hopefully that they can, they can trust and have a good relationship with to, 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 to open up about the barriers that, that essentially may cause you to, to lose your, lose your job or prevent you from being successful in your job so that we can help coach you through it or help you in any way that we can.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anthony, thank you so much for the presentation. Nice to meet you all. Councilmember Hernandez has been quite the evangelist for the program and, and we spend a lot of time talking about affordability from the DAS and out in the community. And, you know, it's very difficult to control the macro elements, but the work that you all are doing to really help individuals with the micro and how they can improve their circumstances through job training, et cetera, is really an important service that, that you all are providing. And I really appreciate the opportunity to, to learn more about this. And I love how you're meeting the people where they are, especially with the, the mobile workforce portal and, and the, the opportunities to bring the, the opportunities to, to the people. To that end, how much of what is offered is available to people in other languages like Spanish?
That's a great, great question. And, and I'll, I'll start with this. We still have a lot more work to do when it comes to language accessibility and the level of language diversity we, we have here in our county. The, our, our website is translatable to, I don't know how many languages, but I don't know how many, but it's a lot of languages. So we've done the accessibility work with our, our website. One of the, we have a diverse workforce as well, but we can't speak the same amount of languages that are present here in the homes of Montgomery County residents. And so one of the things that we did recently, I think within the past year, was we invested in really expensive translation equipment. And so it's through ILA Translate Live and it gives you the ability to have a conversation individually or speak to all of you on the council in six different languages and that you'll hear it real, real time. And so that translation tool is in the hands of all of our career coaches at MCPS. It's in our job centers. It's on our mobile job center so that we can cut down on the, the barriers that are caused by, you know, the language diversity that we have here within our county. So it's a little bit of, it's a lot of technology. It's a lot of being intentional about making sure that we have a level of language diversity on our staff as well. And then it's always, one of the, the core requirements of our Workforce Development Board is to, to figure out how we can use technology to increase accessibility. And so it's a constant conversation on how can we get better when it comes to making sure that our services are palatable, no matter what language you speak.
I think that's great. I mean, one of the things I've been talking to Senator Nancy King about is, you know, how do we expand opportunities for people, you know, in a second language, you know, people who are Spanish speakers, sometimes it's, it's a hurdle for them to learn English and then study in another language when they're just learning English. So the more opportunities that we can provide to people to skill up in their own language and, you know, things like computer coding, et cetera, so that they're able to do that and, and focus on learning that skill versus the, you know, the language and then having to do that. Any opportunities that we have to work with our partners to do that, I think is a, a really important thing. And thank you for the definition of ALICE. I, I had not heard that term and I was kind of shocked with the, the number of, you know, 42% here in the city of Gaithersburg. You may not know this off, offhand, but do you know what percentage of AMI is considered ALICE?
I do not know the number off the top of my head right now, but I can get to the number.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. It's just, you know, as we're, you know, exploring all of these different challenges, it's one thing to know the poverty level, but, you know, this is a, a different threshold where they're, they're not able to qualify for those additional benefits. And I love the gap analysis that you did, you know, geographically, but things like that I think are important for us to understand too, that, you know, maybe there is this group that is not qualifying for benefits, that, you know, we might need to look for other opportunities. You know, we already have our Financial Empowerment Center, which I can see working very hand in glove with you all, but just expanding those opportunities for folks in those spaces. And, and finally, you mentioned the, the mentorship and the summer programs for the MCPS juniors and seniors. I'm just curious, are there opportunities for private school students? Because my son's a good counsel. This is the first I'm hearing of this. So it would just be great for those students to be just made aware of these kinds of programs and figure out if there's ways for them to get connected with those opportunities as well.
Yeah. And so I really appreciate your first point about, about ALICE. And I think that speaks to your question, Jamil, as well. I think that with the ALICE population, a lot of those individuals, because you make over a certain amount, you are ineligible for a lot of public, public services or benefits. And so that's where local and municipality funding does provide a level of flexibility because you don't have to go according to certain federal guidelines because it's local, local funding. So I appreciate that comment and I think that response kind of speaks to, to your question as well. And so with the career coaching program, unfortunately, the legislation was developed for public school students, but that is not the first time we've heard that question, that comment, or even taking a call from a family with a child that's in, or not in MCPS. And so I think the, the, the conversation is starting right now is, is how do we develop a countywide summer employment program that is geared towards serving all Montgomery County residents that are of a certain age in school? And so we're not there yet, but I think it has to start with a conversation. But we, we, we don't offer those services to students who are not enrolled with MCPS, but we're always open to having a conversation with, with families on how can we assist and how can we help, even though they don't fit within the service population for the Blueprint Career Coaching Program.
Understood. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to Neil.
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. There's a lot of great information here, even more than I've heard from Jamil, which is a lot. And I'm curious, we've heard many times that job formation in the county has been a little more sluggish than we would like. Are you, how, how are you finding the opportunity level for the, for the people out there? Are there enough jobs to go around?
The, the businesses that we work with, we're, there's a strategic and tactical part of our work and we're really tactical right now. The, the businesses that we're working with need one, two, 20 people and they need them yesterday. And so there, there's still more jobs than there are job seekers. I think what our task is, is to create a little more alignment when it comes to, to skills with our job seekers and the jobs that are available. And that's where the priorities in working with businesses and understanding what their needs are and then developing talent pipelines comes into, into play. Because there is a job out there, there is an opening for everyone if it's a numerical apples-to-apples equation, but unfortunately it's not. And so there's a bit of a skills misalignment. And so that's where we're trying to take advantage of, of an opportunity to help some of our underserved populations break into certain, certain fields. You saw the, I believe it was Governor Hogan, remove the bachelor degree requirements from thousands of, of, of state jobs. We've worked with a lot of our, our businesses to also look at their requirements and also look at how they, you know, vet returning citizens or look at older workers or younger workers. We're doing a lot of work in the bio space with our bio boot camp, where we're placing individuals without college degrees into the front door of life sciences. And so it's a bit of working on the skills alignment perspective when it comes to helping folks get into, into, into certain jobs. But then it's also, we think, a huge opportunity to help folks get into the door that, that pre-pandemic may not have been able to access certain, certain careers.
All right. Thank you. And one other quick thing, I just, on a personal level, my son is a special needs kid. He's 18. He did an internship at Sunflower. So I'm glad to hear that you've got the next steps for him. We'll dive in a little deeper as we go forward.
He's at a good place.
Yeah. Well, he just did a week-long internship, so he's got a lot more to do.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From Councilmember Harris's comment, where do you see the biggest deficits in the industry? Whether the industry has the job, but you're still looking for folks to fill those jobs from a skill set standpoint?
It, it, it ranges. And it ranges across all of our industries that, that we focus on healthcare, IT, life science, hospitality and construction. We, we still are trying to do a lot of work to promote building trades to our young folks. There's always an opportunity if you want to get into the building trades, but we want to make sure that there's a good alignment. We want to make sure that it really fits kind of who a young person is if we're going to ask them to hang from the sixth floor in DC in February and install commercial, commercial windows. It's got to be a, a good fit. So there's a huge need when it comes to the, the building trades, but a huge opportunity as well with the work that we're doing with, with, with young folks. And, you know, we also see frontline positions when it comes to the healthcare industries. There's a huge demand when it comes to clinical, medical assistance. We work with a lot of our public health providers who are always interested in, in early career professionals coming out of training and just getting their certifications there. Hospitality in, in retail, when it comes to, you know, restaurants, our hotels and so forth, there's a, still a lot of demand and a lot of, you know, need and shortages there. And so, I mean, there, there, it, it, it runs the gamut. That's what comes to mind first and, first and foremost. But I think the trades really comes to mind, mind first because we, we, we have a huge opportunity to increase our infrastructure when it comes to pre-apprenticeship training here in the county and, and promoting trades in a different way so young folks know about the career pathways, entrepreneurial opportunities and the money that they can make without any debt when you go into the building trades. And so our board is separated or the committees are, are segmented by industry, life science, IT, construction and transportation, and healthcare and hospitality. So we can have these conversations about how do we help businesses meet, meet, meet their talent needs? Because when they come to us for all of these different occupations or categories, it's urgent. They, they need these folks yesterday.
That's, that's really interesting to, to see that gap. Is it, is it a shift for you in the work that you've historically done to see more, more jobs than job seekers? Or I shouldn't say job seekers, but job fulfillers? Because I don't, I don't know if the issue is that some are not seeking the job.
There, there is that aspect. So I got into workforce right after college in 2008. So I was hired by Recovery Money in 2008, which got me into workforce. So I, it, it was a similar ebb and flow as it, as it was with, 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 with ARPA. I think in, in both cases, a big opportunity was what we call discouraged workers, and that's a technical term. And I think sometimes there, there are varying levels of motivation out there, but I think a lot of times when we're in the community and we're engaging individuals that aren't counted in that 3% unemployment rate, which looks great, but I think when you peel back the, the layers and you look at our employment pre-pandemic and now, there's still a lot of work to do. When you look at our ALICE population, there's still a lot of work to do. And then when you look at our discouraged workforce, individuals who have searched for work and which, you know, could be for a variety of reasons. Could be because they have a, they have a barrier, they don't think that there's a job out there for them. Those are the residents that we're trying to reach because if we can help them mitigate that barrier, if we can help them connect to something that can help stabilize their personal infrastructure and get them trained or get them into a, a, a program or get them into employment, we can get them counted into the, the labor force and out of the discouraged worker category and into the employment category. And so that's what we, we see a lot of, and I saw a lot of it when I started in workforce is that there are a lot of discouraged workers out there. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a population that's hard to quantify, but we see them every day in the community on our mobile job center.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody from the public who has any questions or comments about this?
Councilmember Wu does.
Oh, well, you, you need to indicate it to me, Councilmember Wu. Please.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I, I, providing context for a lot of what Jamil says to me, this, this, this did because his. answer to everything is, have you looked at WorkSource Montgomery? And so I wanted to follow up on Lisa's last point, because it's something that we're seeing in my day job. And so I work for a major defense contractor, and we've been on a prodigious hiring boom since the pandemic, you know, I think it was over 20,000 jobs. We still have a lot of openings right now, and the problem that we're seeing is that we don't have the skill set matches in the workforce that meet the needs of our company. And so, but what we're seeing is it's not necessarily the jobs that can be satisfied by a certificate. It's not something that can be satisfied by a short-term course or something like that. It really is an experiential gap or a technical competency through education gap. And so I was wondering, you know, I heard a lot here today about trying to match the workforces and shifting workforces, which is great, but are you aligned with, like, the community colleges, the four-year universities, to make sure that those folks that are coming for jobs that require that skill set, that takes a long roadmap to get to, are receiving the guidance that they need to ultimately get there?
Yes, so we are, and we do a lot of professional development workshops pertains to getting the federal job. And we see a lot of individuals come to those workshops who have four-year degrees and so on. With those types of positions, we, in a job fair, we always look inside out, we always want to find our Montgomery County residents. But in those instances, we source talent throughout the region. If we do a job fair for the department, with the Department of Defense as a partner in that job fair. And so we're not just recruiting from Montgomery County, from a program that we run that helps somebody get a certification. We're sourcing talent from the region, from the state, when it comes to individuals. At that point, we only care about you finding somebody that meets your criteria. And we also, because we don't do the work to attract workers from other spaces and places, but we do work with Economic Development, Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, as well as Rockville Economic Development, who does that work to attract workers from other regions and so forth, who have those skill sets. And so it'll be a combination of workshops that we're doing for individuals who do have higher credentials, sourcing talent from the region, and sometimes bringing economic development in, so that they can get your perspective of your needs and the talent that you're seeing from within this region, so they may be able to add some flavor or anything to their outreach and marketing tactics to bring skilled workers here to Montgomery County or to the region.
Okay. And do you guys focus, and I hear from not just Jamil, but a lot of folks, life sciences, life sciences, life sciences. I didn't see defense on that slide. And so you've got Lockheed Martin here, you've got Amentum, you've got Blue Halo, you've got Lidos, you've got, you name it, that you could make a focused effort on recruiting and funneling talent into those industries. I mean, is that something on the horizon? Is that something that's been thought of?
We haven't done a lot in that space, but we're extremely happy that, over the last couple of months, we have welcomed, I forget his title, but a new Workforce Development Board member who is with Lockheed Martin, who manages the workforce development programs. And so it is a conversation that has started recent, on how we can work better with those organizations, defense contractors and so forth, because we haven't done a lot of that in the past. But now we have someone who can kind of guide us through that process.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess they have the same gap, where they have a lot of positions open, but they're just not able to fill them. Last question, focusing on government-type work. So, you know, the governor has been emphasizing his service year, you've got AmeriCorps, you've got, like myself, you know, the armed services, or the, like, the Coast Guard, which I'm not sure is an armed service. Do you guys focus on, do you guys focus on placing folks who are interested in that kind of public service in those directions?
Yeah, so we have placed a lot of individuals with state government, with local government. One of the things that we're doing now is we're trying to figure out how we can create a pathways to government program. And so we're working with Montgomery County HR to figure out what are the pathway opportunities, what are the categories, the classifications, where you can come through our doors and go into Montgomery County Government stores. Would love to talk with HR staff at the city of Gaithersburg as well, to see what type of synergy is there to create a pathways to government program. And so we've done a lot of work in that space and direct placement, helping individuals be prepared and put in a solid application and be great at interviewing and nailing a job when it comes to public jobs, more so on the state and county level. But we're still seeking, I guess, a sweet spot in creating a pathways to government program, where it's a direct pipeline program to local government. So we'd love to work with you all and talk with you all if there's an opportunity there as well.
All right. Is there anybody here tonight who'd like to ask a question or make a comment? Not seeing any. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify on this matter? See, one hand up. Tech team, if you could bring up David Mullins. David, you know all the rules, go right ahead. If you're testifying, we cannot hear you. I guess we have some sort of technical difficulty with David. David, maybe you can send it to us in writing if you're trying to testify. I can't tell, but we can't hear anything that you're saying, so sorry about that. Anybody else on Zoom who'd like to testify? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it very much. I think there's some opportunity here in the future for us to collaborate, so appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to our next work session topic, which is about our conversion from gas to electric vehicles. And we literally have an all-star group coming up to lead us in this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are here to talk about the city fleet transition to electric. I'm here with Police Lieutenant John Leach. The presentation consists of 15 slides.
And just so the public knows, you're Mark Scaffidi.
Oh, yes, I am Mark Scaffidi, the Public Works Operations Division Chief.
The man, the myth, the legend.
Yes.
We'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. So. So our presentation is not a...
Do you need help?
Looks familiar.
Leah, can you please help?
Houston House.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, there's a tab up there.
You got it.
All right, here we go.
Thank you, first time presenting in the new council chambers. Thank you. So in 2015, the Maryland Smart Energy Community established the following goals: to reduce building energy consumption by 10% of the 2015 levels, and reduce petroleum consumption by 20% by the 2015 levels. In 2022, the Public Works took advantage of the Clean Fuels Technical Assistance Program to help plan fleet electrification and meet the goals of smart energy communities, as well as of Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, reducing greenhouse gases by 50% below the 2005 levels by 2030, and by 80% below the 2005 levels by 2050. The city received technical assistance from the ICF to develop a potential alternative fuel fleet strategy. Assessments include vehicle replacement recommendations, economic analysis of vehicle electrification, and emissions, and analyst of electrical electrification of the city fleet. After reviewing the findings in the report, we began to discuss with other departments regarding these transitions and identified vehicles which made sense for core city operations. Based on the technologies at the time, three significant factors were we are proposing in the plan. So three adjustments we are proposing in the plan. So snow removal operations, police pursuit vehicles, and police fleet diversity. After doing extensive review of the ICF report, we reviewed current city fleet and needs for core city fleet operations. Overall, staff felt that the recommendations in the ICF report were very aggressive, and staff wants to take a less risky approach in transitioning to electric. The easy decisions were the administrative vehicles, and staff agrees that transitioning administration vehicles to electric is smart and feasible. Current charging infrastructure allows for these electric vehicles with minimal challenges. Staff recently purchased two electric Ford Escape plug-in hybrid vehicles. These vehicles have an 80-mile range in pure electric mode, before switching over to the hybrid vehicle. The difficult and much riskier decisions were concerning the police department fleet and the Public Works fleet. These vehicles, at times in service, are around the clock during emergency response situation. A good example is the recent tornadoes earlier this summer. Other examples would be winter operations. Prior to receiving the report, city staff had already begun transitioning select vehicles to EVs. In 2022, staff purchased the first of three electric vehicles into the city fleet. Two were for the Public Works pool vehicles, one for our project managers to drive in, and one was for the parking enforcement vehicle for the police department. All gas power blowers will be replaced by July 1, 2025, meeting the Montgomery County regulations. Public Works is also being proactive and will continue to replace some gas-powered string trimmers, hedge trimmers, and some chainsaws. In emergency response situations, electric chainsaws are not the best choice to clear hazards in a timely fashion. At the end of FY '24, the city fleet was compromised, yeah, compromised of 234 units. Public Works and police make up 84% of the city fleet. Of the city fleet, 53% of the fleet vehicles are gasoline, 35% are diesel, 6.4% are hybrid, and 5.6% are electric vehicles. The current chart depicts the current charging ports, both public and private, at city facilities. If the city were to add rapid-charging devices to the Public Works facility, that may facilitate the possibility of adding a limited number of electric plow vehicles, pickup trucks, and single-axle dump trucks. We would want to do this in a limited basis to ensure changes would allow for us to meet our core service requirements during storms and snow removal operations. During this, would change the current replacement forecast for the city vehicles.
Currently, the police requirements are, the vehicle is pursuit-rated. There is no current electric vehicle that is considered pursuit-rated. Pursuit rating can include an upgraded transmission, heavy-duty suspension, reinforced frames, and the other items that are mentioned. We operate right now on a four-day workweek with 10-hour patrol shifts. We would need a vehicle that could operate for that entire 10 hours. Battery limitations would require us to charge during shift, and that's just not an acceptable outcome for us at this point. We always prefer all-wheel-drive and four-wheel-drive vehicles, because we can drive them year-round, depending on the inclement weather. Right now, upfitting is not something that our current vendor has done with an electric vehicle. When we talk about upfitting, we talk about lights, sirens, prisoner partitions to allow us to transport prisoners, things like that. They've done no cars whatsoever, and don't know of any vendors in our area that have. I know that we've read a couple of articles out of California where that's been extremely problematic with the vehicles that they offer. Current police fleet diversity, by the end of FY '25, we're going to have 21 hybrid vehicles. I'd like to note that out of the 21, three of them are still from an FY '23 order that we never received. We have difficulty getting hybrid cars. We've been waiting since FY '23 for three of the cars, and we continue to try and order them. We do want fleet diversity, and it is important to us. 27% of our fleet will be hybrids at that point, once we've completed those orders. The Dodge Durango has similar gas mileage to the hybrid, has engine stop-start technology, and also has an 8-speed transmission that helps with gas mileage. The Chevrolet Tahoe, we have three of those, one for K-9 and two of our command staff members, and then one K-9 vehicle is a Ford F-150. It's important to note that all of our sworn staff need to be able to respond to emergencies. If we have a critical incident in the city of Gaithersburg, the chief of police may need to respond to that critical incident. All of our commanders are on-call on the weekends and are susceptible to being called in for critical incidents. All of our staff are working, and our sworn police officers can respond to emergencies.
And just to touch on that a little bit, so Planning and Code also has, they have 14 of the Ford utility hybrids also on order. So when we get to the following slide, those vehicles aren't in the presentation, well, they're not listed there because we haven't received them yet. So those numbers, the hybrid vehicles, will change once those vehicles come in. So in developing this replacement forecast, consider the list of pros and cons regards to replacing current internal combustion engine vehicles with electric vehicles in We have considered risk management in our plan, which allows for fallback if need be. We will need to monitor the sales of electric vehicles when replacing them as the return on these vehicles are presently unknown. Additionally, we have to be prepared for shifts in manufacturing's decisions and shifts in technology. We are currently collecting data from usage from our electric equipment and vehicles. As we continue to monitor battery life, we will be able to make informed decisions when it comes to time to replace the vehicles or equipment. Last winter, we noticed that the battery life was diminished in cold weather. So that was in our facility vans. We have a hybrid one, and the battery life had diminished. As you can see by this chart, we expect gasoline vehicles to be reduced from 52.99% at the end of FY '24 to 34.18% at the end of FY '30. Diesel vehicles will go from 34.04% to 29.96%. We do intend on replacing some of the diesel-powered, non-snow removal equipment with electric equipment. So two buses, the recreation buses, two of our boom trucks that we do bulk... that we do bulk pickup with, and the city's street sweeper. So they are currently now making an electric street sweeper. Hybrid vehicles will go from 6.14% to 14.77%, and finally, electric vehicles will go from 5.56% to 21.1%. We will continue to monitor EV charging technology developments, faster charging times, longer ranges, snowplow case studies, and pilot programs for opportunities to electrify in the future. We will also continue to monitor emerging technologies such as hydrogen fuel cells. And do you have any questions for us?
Well, first, a comment. Thank you very much for putting this all together. I'm sure there are some questions and comments from the council. Who'd like to go first? Okay, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for the presentation. Mark, you and I had talked about cost analysis, and I initially was sending an email, and I said, no, don't send the email. So I'm going to ask the question here. Just in terms of benefit, particularly over a period of time, as we see hybrids or EVs come in and gasoline vehicles go out, so the cost of gasoline will reduce. But where do we get a benefit? Because at some point, we have to build infrastructure, and I see the number in there, 1.5 million for the power upgrade at Public Works. When do we realize at least a break even on that? So I know those numbers aren't here today, but...
Yes, exactly. So we would have to do a cost-benefit analysis and see when, you know, when that break-even point is. It's really hard to say at this point, but we could work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll go to Rob.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, both of you. Question, what are we seeing from other jurisdictions in our area? And I recognize you mentioned California as being one place where they were perhaps having difficulty with electronic vehicles for pursuit vehicles, and recognizing that's a drastically different environment as far as probably subsidies for those vehicles, as well as, you know, I've been to California recently, their gas seems to be double our price. And so comparison locally, I think, is more informative. And so I'm wondering, what are we seeing from Rockville, Frederick, Tacoma Park, Annapolis? What's their fleet mix?
They have fleet diversity with both gas and hybrid cars. There's no electric cars in use. I know that Montgomery County had bought the Mach-Es with the purpose to deploy some of those in the police department. That did not work, and they ended up changing the direction with that and assigned the Mach-Es to the actual county government staff, non-police. I don't have all of the particulars in that. I can say that we're always working hard to look at emerging technologies, look at what's out there to suit our needs. The electric vehicles are just not there yet. It's not that we don't want to go there, it's just that we don't have options to go there, and that's where our limitations come. I can't even get into the infrastructure at this point because there's nothing available to us that would meet our needs as a police department.
Okay. Yeah, interesting. And I'm certainly not suggesting chasing technology or to be on the cutting edge of technology, but buying what works. And then so for the rest of the fleet, what are we seeing from the rest?
So our approach has been, you know, kind of a cautious approach. So any vehicle that we can, such as a project manager vehicles, so you'll probably see them running around the city, we have switched those over to electric. The director's vehicle was switched to a Ford F-150, and we did purchase electric, and we purchased one for the stormwater division. So if it's something that's not in an emergency response or emergency situation, we are going to continue to convert those to EV vehicles. And as noted in the presentation, we bought two plug-in electric hybrids for the recreation department, and that's because if they have to go to a conference, say, over on the eastern shore, they can run the first 80 miles on electric, get the rest of the way there on gas, then plug in and get recharged back up to make the trip back.
Okay. And then you mentioned hydrogen. I think the county uses some, and they may have a filling station. That seems like logistically difficult for the city unless we have partnership agreements to...
Correct. So we would have to get an agreement. Montgomery County does have a filling station, but obviously, we don't have one here at the city of Gaithersburg.
Jamil?
Have you thought about, how would you describe, maybe first with the police, your tipping point? So look at my personal experience in our household. I'm a pickup truck driver, right? Tow heavy things, needed a lot of range. You know, it was a 35-gallon, you know, Ram pickup truck. It's very expensive to fill up. And, you know, look at what the market offered. There wasn't anything that had the same towing capacity, range capacity, until one day there was, right? And so now I have a pickup truck that's electric, 412-mile, 420-mile range, toes more than the previous one. So that tipping point, you know, sort of hit. What does that look like in the police department in terms of range, charging, you know, before we get into infrastructure? Because I agree with you. I think we're not there yet, but what does getting there look like?
I don't have an answer for that because I don't know where technology is going to go. I don't know where we're going to reach a point where we say, hey, this is good enough or not. I don't have any solution at all for you right now with the products that are out there for electric vehicles. I don't know where we would be because we don't have anything to compare to.
So I think to add to that, I mean, at a minimum, right, if we go to page 29, some of those things are listed out, right? So we need at least 10 hours, right? You need to be able to upfit with...
10 hours means 800 miles or...
They're not, they don't, we're still 10 square miles.
Yeah.
But it needs to be able to run without a charge, right? We can't have a vehicle out of service during shift while charging. So that feels like hurdle one.
Yeah, that probably translates to like a kilowatt-hour capacity or a charging speed. Like, I feel like there's a number we can get to see, and we know what battery technology improvements are. You know, five years ago, they were getting 100 miles of range, and 200, and 300, and now there's new generations getting 500. I think Volkswagen has a pickup truck that's even better than the one I have. It does 500 miles of range. So there's a point where that tips over and can do a 10-hour shift. I'd just be curious to learn what that means.
And that's what our requirement right now is, 10-hour shift to run. But, you know, it's going to be past 10 hours because what if the officer gets held over?
For sure, yeah.
Is it going to be, meet the pursuit criteria? When we talk about pursuit criteria, we're not chasing cars across the city of Gaithersburg, but we are responding to robberies where we're using our lights and sirens, we're pushing the cars a lot harder because we're trying to get there. We're trying to intervene in the robbery, we're trying to solve the crime. So pursuit is a terminology that we use, but in reality, we're looking for cars that can reach those limitations safely.
Yeah.
And that's what that gives us.
Multiple times potentially.
Absolutely, multiple times. We talk about charge capacity. You know, if I end up having 10 priority calls during a shift, that's going to need a whole lot more energy than a slow shift on day work where there's no emergency calls for service. If I'm stuck in traffic for hours, you know, that causes, I'm sure, more of a drain on the battery. Again, I don't think I have just a hard and fast, hey, this is where we need to be in order to get there, right? There are just so many factors with it. All I can tell you is what's there right now doesn't meet any of these needs.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And your point is well-taken, Lieutenant Leach. I mean, the fact that, you know, both police and Public Works are high-demand uses of vehicles with pursuit, with, you know, large vehicles doing difficult work like snowplowing, et cetera. And to your point, the technology just isn't there yet. I really appreciate, you know, doing the due diligence and seeing where we are. We obviously, you know, have a goal of getting to as close to carbon neutral as we can. You know, this is an area where we just don't have the technology there. The focus has been on consumers and getting more adoption in that space and less in the more specialized areas of, you know, high demand police car usage, high demand Public Works usage. So, you know, those things need to exist before the data can even exist to be able to determine, you know, what would a best-case scenario be? What would that price point look at? How do we get to a break? There's just so many steps that would need to happen. You know, so that, at least for the time being, we'll just need to continue to look in other places where we can, you know, be more efficient, understanding that this is a high-demand space. You know, we have the tools that we need right now. It's one of the things, you know, both our police and our Public Works are one of the, are two of the areas that the city of Gaithersburg is well-known for, having excellent services. And you guys need the proper tools to do your jobs. So I'm looking forward to getting to an electric car myself at some point.
I agree.
That's what I hear. But, you know, unfortunately, we're not there yet. And I think Councilman Hernandez's point about, or maybe it was Councilman Woo that talked about, you know, California, obviously, it's a very different environment, even just doing any kind of testing. It's warmer, it's flatter in many places. These are just different circumstances that are not going to be a good apples-to-apples comparison for us. So appreciate the exploration. And, you know, it's one of those things we gotta put a pin on until the technology catches up with our goal of being able to do this. And it seems like we're pretty, we're a few years away from that, at the very least. So thank you, Jim.
Lisa?
Just a short comment. I think there's a danger. I think that until the industry focuses on public safety specifically, I don't think we get there. Otherwise, we're trying to, you know, fit a square peg into a round hole. So I think that's going to be what needs to happen.
All right. Is there anybody who'd like to testify on this topic? Questions, comments from the public? Not seeing any. Let me just go to Zoom. And I don't see any attendees anymore on Zoom. So we thank you all very much for the update and for your work on this. And appreciate that everyone's keeping an eye on what the latest technologies are and how they could be utilized in the city of Gaithersburg. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Well, that concludes our second discussion topic, and we are going to go, council and I are going to go into executive session. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council is on Monday, November 18. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.